Repeat after me, Mr. Lawson. I, Harold Lee Lawson.
I, Harold Lee Lawson.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue.
so long as I continue.
a citizen thereof.
a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
about, about what I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's 3:00 PM. The work session for the City Council, City of Sims, is now called to order. Roll call vote.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts is absent. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
and Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
All right, very good. All right. As I said, Mr. Watts is ill. He won't be here today. First item is number three. Approval of the minutes from previous work session council meeting on July 5th, 2017. Okay. Okay. Take a minute to look those over. Hey Troy, how you doing?
Good. Come on in, have a seat.
Yeah. All right. Take your time, look those over. Is there a second?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
One.
Sure.
This, um, one, 8801 to Jose Weaver. What, uh, what is that? Is that the intersection?
We're actually, um, reviewing the minutes for consideration from the last work session.
Okay.
We're not on the checks yet.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we'll get to that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Platt has done the motions approved minutes.
A second.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meetings are, the minutes are approved from the work session. Okay. And let's see, Corporal Hardy.
Yes, sir.
You're here.
I'm ready.
Great, and you will be giving us the Sims crime report.
Yes, sir.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Uh, we're gonna be covering the periods from June 15th to June 30th, 2017. I've also handed you out, uh, some, a couple of spreadsheets with the total calls for service. Uh, we're gonna be talking about the primary calls for service after this particular slide. The total calls for service during this timeframe was 502, as opposed to last year was 513. Next slide, please. Primary calls for service or 911 hangups were 24. Last year we had 28, so the negative four means we're down four. So residential thefts, we had five, we're up one. Commercial thefts, we had six, we're down seven. Stolen vehicles, we had four, we're up three. Residential burglaries, we had eight, we're up five. Commercial burglaries, we had two, we're up two. Vehicle burglaries, we had 10, we're up three. Residential alarms, we had 32, we're up four. Commercial alarms, we had 17, we're down 16 from last year. Okay, crimes on the rise, residential thefts, stolen vehicles, residential burglaries, commercial burglaries, vehicle burglaries, residential alarms. On the decline, our calls for service, commercial thefts, 911 hangups, commercial alarms. Okay, this brings us to our significant events. Okay, on, uh, June 18th, Walmart, here in Sims, Princeton Warren was arrested and charged with resisting arrest. Certain persons forbidden to possess a pistol. How this particular incident occurred was, uh, two deputies were flagged down over here across the street in Holly's parking lot in reference to an altercation that was taking place between a man and a woman. And that they saw a pistol in the waistband of this gentleman. Deputies responded to the scene. Shortly thereafter, two other deputies also responded. During the interview process, they were trying to get him to hand his child over to the mother. He refused. They asked him if he was armed, he said that he wasn't, and then he reached for the waistband, actually went for the gun. Uh, deputies grabbed a hold of the weapon and was able to take it away from him. Uh, the whole time he had his child in his hand, his hands, and, uh, a struggle ensued, and we were able to get the child away from, away from him. I think it's important to note that, uh, three out of four deputies in this altercation were Northside deputies, that means they had to come out of the north end of the county to assist here. Uh, one of the deputies here was a Sims unit, and the other two Sims units were en route to call us. So, next slide, please. On June 21st, 2017, Welveron Woods Drive, Ricky Strickland was arrested and charged with escape first and unlawful possession of hydro ammonia. How this incident occurred was the, uh, US Marshal's Task Force along with our K-9 unit from the Sheriff's Department have been looking for Mr. Strickland for some time. He had made threats to shoot it out with law enforcement before he went back to prison. We were able to track him over in Welveron Woods, and when we located where he was, he fled the scene. Sheriff's Department K-9 unit was able to track him, and they found him hiding under a house. And K-9 Django apprehended Mr. Strickland. He received some injuries to his head, arms, and legs during the apprehension. Next slide, please. Uh, June 30th, 2017, deputies recovered two stolen vehicles at an address on Reguere Drive here in Sims. Michelle Cochran and Christopher Chambliss were arrested and charged in connection with the crimes. Next slide. Christopher Chambliss was charged with perceiving stolen property first. Michelle Cochran was charged with theft of property first, two counts, and unlawful breaking the entering of a vehicle. How this incident was reported to us was a, uh, I guess, an informant that knew these people and knew that they had a couple of stolen vehicles. Sims units responded, were able to verify all the stolen vehicles on the property, and, uh, knocked on the door, and they came to the door, and through the investigation, they were able to be arrested and charged with these crimes. All right, any questions?
That's a significant number of calls.
Very good.
502.
What are those pictures, body cams?
No, sir, those were, uh, some of them were taken by me, and others were, uh, the first instance you saw was, that was actually, uh, some clips taken from a video that a citizen here in Sims took over here from Walmart when all that was taking place. And, uh, the other pictures I was able to find on that, um, Metro website. Any other questions?
Mr. Webb? Mr. Platt?
No. Good.
Mr. Lawson, questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
All right. All right, next item is item five. Financial report, review of checks for signature. Mr. Lawson, basically what you're doing there is you'll be looking at checks for the council to approve that are not of the reoccurring nature. If they're reoccurring checks, and some recurring checks, the council has allowed me to sign off on those without the city council viewing them before they're signed. But if they are not reoccurring, then we have to approve them in each view. So you feel free to take your time. We don't vote on them during the work session, but we allow all the council members to take a look at all the checks.
President, do you have, uh, the financial records here, can you?
Yes, sir.
8778. January, what is that?
What's the number?
8778.
This was Neil Schaefer. They would provide engineering services, um, and inspections on the sidewalk project.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jason, Jason, that's on one of your contracts.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
She, she pretty much said it, it's, uh, they did the design and the inspection on the sidewalk projects, so every time they pour concrete, somebody from that firm has to be there to check it for, test it for, um, compaction, strength, and all that type of stuff.
And it, as you'll notice there, in that, um, in the check detail, it says 2015-17, which was a resolution we approved for the funds, so that's where the money's coming from. So it was already approved.
Okay. Very good. Good question. Mr. Smith, do you have a question about any checks?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Webb, do you have any questions?
None.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Lawson, take your time. I know it's your first meeting and... Did you? Are there any other questions from council regarding checks for signature? Mr. Lawson, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. I think the rest I've phoned. Very good. We'll move on. The next item is proposed ordinance. This ordinance involves something I'm really excited about and happy to report. It's a discussion to authorize in an ordinance a execution of a part-time facility rental agreement. The good news on this is that, for a while now, we wanted to have in the city of Sims a community college with the capacity to offer classes to our residents and those in the surrounding communities, give them an opportunity to go to class and not have to drive all the way down to Broad Street or go across the bay to Faulkner. And fortunately, we are almost there. In negotiations with Dr. Sykes, president of Bishop State, we have reached a tentative agreement. An agreement that if the council reviews and approves, will give us a connection and a partnership with Bishop State Community College to begin offering community college courses in August of this year. The courses will be conducted at the fire training facility Monday through Thursday nights from approximately 5:00 PM till approximately 10:00 PM. As part of the contract, Bishop State has agreed to pay for expenses regarding the lights and the use of the facility, as well as providing funds for one of our city employees to be there before, during, after class to make sure that the facility is safeguarded, lights are turned on and off, the building is locked up at the end of the session, and basically provide our presence there for the city of Sims, so that our, our building is secured and everything is according to the book. This is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for us. I enjoyed working with Dr. Sykes. He's been extremely professional, extremely helpful. His staff came out on several occasions and visited our many wonderful opportunities and our facilities here in Sims, and it worked out. And if the council approves this contract, we will soon be able to offer our citizens community college courses. What's particularly important about this is that, for those of you who are familiar with it, there is a project, a program called the STAR Project. And basically, it says that if you complete a credit course at a state junior college, Bishop State, Faulkner, uh, any of the junior colleges, those credit hours automatically transfer to a state university. And that is significant, and that is important. And so many of the colleges today are full profit, and there are many good full profit schools out there, and we support them. This is an opportunity for the community college to establish a foothold here and give students an opportunity to take English 101, History 101, other 101 courses that they can use as a foundation for their bachelor's degree at the University of South Alabama or anywhere they wish to go. They can take the credits earned here in Sims and go anywhere in the state, and those credits transfer automatically. And I think that is a great thing for our people. They will not have to travel a long way to do that. So, that said, I'm open to questions about this, and council, feel free. I'll try to share with you what I know, above and beyond things.
Mr. President, I'm excited about this too. Dr. Sykes informed us that over 100, I believe, 140 MGM students are actually taking Bishop State courses right now while they're still in high school and are moving to this fall. And many of those will be able to go to school right here in Sims, where they happen to live downtown. So, uh, I see that as a great growth opportunity, and it's a really exciting thing to have this beginning of a development, getting right here in Sims.
Yes. Mr. Webb, thoughts?
This facility is large enough to handle?
Yes, sir. They'll be using the main training room now. As you know, until recently, Station 1 was operating out there, and they have moved back to their station on Wolf Road, freeing up the facility just in the nick of time. So it worked out just right.
Good.
But yes, they'll be using the two, the main room in the front, the training center room. And of course, those areas that are off limits or not to be used by the students will be clearly earmarked. We will explain everything from a city perspective to both the professor of the class and to the students, so there should be no confusion. And one of our employees will be there as well. And we pretty much have to do that, and talking with other mayors and other council members from other cities who have a similar agreement with entities such as this. The main thing is you have someone there to protect your interests, and that's what we can do. And I think the benefit to the public will be, will be impressive. I'm very happy about it, and we're just delighted.
Do you have any idea how many will be used?
Well, it's, I believe the capacity is 40 for the room. I believe the capacity is 40 for the room. I have not been told of the numbers scheduled for the first class, but as soon as I get that, that set of numbers, I'll let everyone know. I don't know what those numbers are. It is July, it's the middle of July. I would imagine that by, certainly the end of the first week in August, they will know exactly how many students are gonna be here. And I believe the contract's scheduled to start around the 13th of August, so we'll know at least a few days before that.
Mayor, I know that you put an awful lot of effort in this, and I don't know who all will evolve, but I really appreciate it, this is really good.
Thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm very pleased, and as I said, Dr. Sykes was a pleasure to work with. I appreciate our legal counsel. We sent this to the legal department. They went back and forth with Bishop State's attorneys to make sure that the agreement was legitimate and legal, and I believe we crossed all those hoops, so I believe we're good to go. Any other questions? As I get more information, I'll share it with council. We will soon have, I think in the very near future, our own scroll sign for the city of Sims, one of the electric scroll signs, and on that will be public service announcements in, in respect to South Alabama utilities issues. We'll also put educational opportunities on the, on the scroll page, the scroll board, and everything else pertinent to public, so that will be good too. And Jason is working with Bishop State now to make sure that the accessibility issues and the egress and ingress to the facility have worked out, so no problems there so far, right? Okay. Very good. All right. Any other questions about this? I would ask council, we'll review that at your leisure, and we'll try to get this through the process. Okay. Very good. Item 7B is appointment of a city council member to the planning commission for the 2016 to 2020 term. The state code of Alabama requires that for this particular vacancy on the planning commission, the city council must vote on the individual.
Oh, Mayor, we've, uh, we've skipped, uh, item 7A. Yes, sir, the marching festival.
Okay. Well, let's see, let's go, well, we'll finish B and go back to A. Okay. I missed A. Anyway, item B is appointment to the city council, as I said. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. President, at the proper time, I would like to have the privilege and pleasure of nominating Councilmember Warren to that position.
Very good. Very good. Any other discussion? Mr. Robin, any comment?
What did he just put me on?
You've been volunteered.
You weren't fussy then.
Mr. Platt, any comment?
Uh, I like it, uh, it's a good move, good move.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm with me.
Okay. Moving on, item A, the item I jumped over earlier, this is an authorizing agreement between the city of Sims and the Board of School Commissioners in Mobile County in support of the Isaiah City Marching Festival. Take a look at that. City of Sims has been supporting this for what, four years? How long? About four years. This has been reviewed by council and approved by council. But if you will notice on the attachment, it gives you the breakout of the expenses. We will not vote on this today. The, the specific performance contract is not finished yet, and so it will probably be on, as an agenda item for the next meeting. Okay? But this gives you some introduction, introductory facts to it. This year's event, I spoke to the band director, they're going to have the University of South Alabama as one of their, the show group, the show band. They will do a full show, and they were having bands from all over the state compete. So this will be a big event. It's at Mary G. Montgomery's football field, it will start in the afternoon. The host school, of course, is Mary G. Montgomery. They'll be there all day as they set up and prepare for this, but it should be quite an event. A few, they're a lot of fun. Young people having a good time, and it is 100% open to the public. Any questions on this? On item 7A, Mr. Smith?
I think it's, uh, worthwhile to note how many people that will bring into the city of Sims, so really it's a significant, uh, citywide event in terms of our local restaurants and stores and gas stations, so.
And getting bigger. As I said, I spoke to the band director, his goal next year is to get university bands from other parts of the state to come in and bring their marching band. So this should be bigger and bigger and better, so it's very good. Very good for our young people. Mr. Webb, any comment?
Yeah.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawson, any thoughts? Okay. Very good. Now, we'll move back on to item 7C, which is authorizing the expenditure of funds to contract with driven engineering to provide consultation reporting concerning acceptance of certain private roads as public roads of the city of Sims. Jason, you brought this up earlier. As you know, we cannot spend city funds to pave a private road. However, we have developed a set of criteria which, if met, can authorize, once a city accepts the road into their domain, we can pave it. So, do you wish to add anything to that?
The only thing I would add to is, this is just what this contract is about, is just getting the authorization for preliminary engineering to, so that they can come back and give you information on, um, costs involved, maintenance calls, upfront calls, things like that. So, basically gives, giving us a professional opinion on what this is gonna cost us. So then you can decide whether you wanna vote on accepting it or not.
They're using their technical expertise as engineers to determine the nuts of both of it.
Yep. And they'll come back and give us a report at the time for a round of discussion.
Right. Because as you know, when you, when a city adopts a private road, you adopt all the problems with it, and that includes if it needs resurfacing, drainage, any issue that comes up with that road, once you accept it, you own it. So that's why we have to be very careful and very cautious. And the idea here is driven engineering would give us the technical expertise to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Okay? So, any questions, Mr. Smith, on that?
Well, I believe this is a very... Well, I believe this is a very good procedure. And this is a, going to be a rare thing for me to say, but I think even the price is right for this engineering service.
All right.
And I'll hear that again, but I think it's a good price for the information we've developed.
All right. Very good, Mr. Webb?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Platt, thoughts?
I'm always concerned when I see how much you call for these roads.
Sure.
And Mr. Smith, this is more than fair, but let's hope that Jason continues to do his outstanding job and can oversee all of this because we can't do all of it by ourselves, you know?
Very true.
But I think it's a good move.
Very true. Mr. Lawson, any comment?
What kind of liability were you running to take me doing this, changing from a private road to a public road?
Well, it's, it's like any, I mean, we basically are responsible for it. We, we would maintain it. We would put it on our schedule for surfacing, resurfacing. If any potholes develop in it, once we accept the road, we would have to fix it. Any issues that came up with the road, we would be as a city responsible for it. And that's why we're proceeding cautiously because there are many, many people with private roads who would like the city to adopt them. But we can't just do it without, without a plan and without a criteria because you just, you're incurring greater and greater responsibility and greater, greater cost down the road. And yes, go ahead, Jason.
I'm just going to mention that the contract states that the, that the citizens on the road indemnify the city against liability for roadway defects for a period not to exceed five years. So, we have a five-year window of anything that happens with the city. But after that five years, we should be prepared to, we should know everything about the road by then, and then we will be responsible.
Yeah, yeah. That's a very good question. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
If you have one rock down or that objects to the, this stacking place is canceled or no longer considered, is that right?
My understanding is, is it would have to be, everyone living on the road would have to agree to transition from a private road to a city road.
Well, there would be a right-of-way involved, so everybody would have to agree to give a certain portion of right-of-way. But yeah, it would have to be.
So, yes, as a citizen, you're saying, I give up my claim to the right-of-way. And once you do that, of course, you, you give your right-of-way. But the city accepts it. And so, that's why you see our Public Works people out now cleaning out the storm drains, cleaning, cutting grass to the edge of where the right-of-way ends. It's two-edged sword. You lose your property, but you gain the city maintenance and protection. But that's a good question. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's unanimous. Counsel can check because I don't know how you can do it without it being unanimous. I would think, yeah. Okay, all right. Very good. Next item is authorizing the expenditure of funds for the dedication and grand reopening of the City of Sims Fire Station Number One. As you know, tomorrow morning, is it 10:00 AM?
10:00.
10:00?
Yes, sir.
10:00.
10:00?
It's 10:00.
It's 10:00. Tomorrow morning at 10:01, 10:00. Station One will be reopened in a grand reopening ceremony, which we're very excited about. Public Works has been over there for how long? Two months?
Something like that.
About, about two months fixing it up. There was quite a bit of work to be done on Station One before we could move our firefighters back into it. But I believe we've made progress. We've finished, among other things, the drain problem. Water was flooding into the building. We've done quite a bit of renovations. Jason, you want to elaborate on that? I think it's important to tell everybody that, that we took due diligence in making sure that Fire Station One is up and ready to go.
Yeah, I think the main things that we did, I think we did some cosmetic stuff such as painting. We had to replace some, some boards and some drywall in the drainage project in front to get the water from coming into the building. We redid the vinyl on the front of the building, patched some holes in the roof, and just did some cleanup type work. Do you think anything else we might have done? Pretty much it.
Okay.
Patched some asphalt, stuff like that.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you. But it looks good?
Yes.
Looks good. Very good. And this is basically is authorizing, this discussion is authorizing, I believe it's $400?
Yes, sir.
$400 for expenditure of funds for the dedication and grand reopening ceremony. And this has been approved by counsel. And of course, it is open to everyone. Any questions on item D, Mr. Smith?
Well, this is going to be a very significant event in our city's history. And so, I hope everybody can be there and certainly this is a small amount to provide for the, for the occasion, so.
Right. Mr. Webb, comments, sir?
I think it looks, I think it looks better now than it ever has.
I agree. It really looks nice over there.
Sure.
Really looks nice.
Thank you all, they've got us involved in that.
I think we would all agree, the five of us up here, we, we all appreciate and we would give huge thanks to everyone who worked on the project. You'll please pass that on. Okay? Really grateful of that. You know, we, we are lucky in that we have so much in-house talent. I mean, it's not, it's not every city that could simply send three or four of their workers out there and fix a drainage problem to include the concrete, laying of the concrete, everything. But we can do that. And you think of all the money that that saves. We don't have to contract it out. We can do the work ourselves during the regular workday. We don't have to pay overtime, which I, I don't like. And that's just, that's just a wonderful thing. Okay, committee reports. First up is finance, Mr. Smith.
One of the things we're working on is annexation. And we're about 80% through on this Swetburn subdivision. Hopefully, we'll have something for the council to consider on that in August. The finance committee is, is now up against the deadline of September 1st to deliver to this council a proposed budget for the next year so that the council will have a whole 30 days to consider it. And so, we've set that to, we've left that fuse and so now we're having to scramble to kind of get ready for that. So, we'll do that. Otherwise, finances are uneven keel.
Very good, very good. Mr. Webb, do you have any questions regarding finance, sir?
No.
Mr. Platt?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, finance committee. Mr. Webb, roadways and right-of-ways, public works.
Want me to read all this?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I'll link the other one. Uh, this is the results of the, part of it is the auction for the roller and mower. Ferguson roller auction for $4,005. The Toro Zero Turn mower auction for $3,0275. The following items are, are replacement items. Waka Nissan RD12A-1 ton roller with $14,990. This is a smaller roller that can be more easily towed to the work site. And our director over there says having this roller will allow us to better asphalt patch repairs. I know you've seen streets patch where there's a big bump there. This will help prevent that. Said currently, we use a hand tap which doesn't get good compaction and leaves the surface uneven. Thank you, Jason.
And if I might add, that's, that's what we'd like to purchase. We haven't purchased it yet.
Oh, yeah.
That's the replacement items that we would like.
Work on it. And Kubota ZD1211-60 inch diesel, $12,689. It's a commercial mower with a diesel engine, shaft-driven, strong suspension and a stronger deck. And the mower gets better fuel efficiency and it's diesel, and it's diesel, so we will be able to fill at the diesel tank at the facility. Resurfacing project, Marsh Hill Road, Aragon Street, Barton Drive and Larry Drive have been resurfaced. That's finished. Drainage work has been completed on Larry Drive and Don Street. Contractor will start back on Red Creek Drive, Red Creek Drive North, Don Street, Paula Drive, Eastwood Drive and Eastwood Court next week. Estimated completion date is mid-August. Carpenter crew finishing up a drainage job on Brunson Avenue where the driveway pipe had to be lowered so the water in the ditches would flow better. Just finished the drainage job on Pine Land Drive to correct the flow of water from washing out the citizen jar. Right-of-way crew picking up litter and boarding the normal route just added the five-lane Schillinger road section between Marsh Hill and Ward's Lane. And the last item is a GIS planning. Working with the county on securing the location for the electronic sign, preparing bid documentation so that we can start advertising for bids. All of that's yet to be completed.
Good.
Thank you, Jason.
And Jason, also, thank you for your help Monday night. As you know, or you may not know, we had a, a water pipe burst over there near Regent Bank and it shut water down for about six hours. But thanks to the combined efforts of, of Sims Public Works and South Alabama Utilities and using equipment and facilities and material, we were able to get that water turned back on in about six hours. The road patched immediately and right now, that road is operating on a patch. And that's why you'll notice the orange cones over there near, as you exit the post office, would ask the public to bear with us for now. That road, I believe I'm right, is not quite ready for wait. And that's why that, that exit out of the post office is blocked off.
Uh, we did open that back up.
Did you open it?
Yes, sir, we opened it back up because.
Was that today?
Looks like it's tightened it back up and I don't think there's any chance of any displacement of the rock that we're going to patch in it.
So, the exit's open?
Yes, sir, it's open now.
Okay.
Still patched with, with a rock, on the rock surface, but there's still a little bit of settling. We don't want to do any permanent patches. It's still, everything's settled. We know that we're not going to have a problem, tunnel or anything like that.
And of course, one good thing about it is it's all in Illinois and that's where our Public Works Department is. So, they get to check it about 20 times a day. So, that's great. Also, from talking to the gentleman in charge of South Alabama Utilities, there doesn't appear to be any controversy over their repair of the radio, of the road. They're going to come in, what would you guess, maybe a month from now?
Yeah.
And repave the road. And that will include anything that was damaged by all this water. Because as you know, we have to be very careful. When water undermines a road, it can be a big problem. I believe we caught the leak fairly quickly. That's the good news. If it had run on for two or three days, I noticed, no telling what would have happened. Probably would have almost certainly lost the road all the way to 98. So, we're going to continue to watch it and Jason has it under control. And if we notice any problem with that, we'll, we'll put the cones back out and we'll pay attention. And I know you'll let us know if there's any problem. And there was a, on a fire tower, was that fixed?
Yeah, that was a smaller, more.
Smaller, yeah.
Not there as bad.
That's good, okay. Yes, sir?
I want to say a special thank you to the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Uh, they were there before anybody else.
Bravo. Bravo.
Yep.
That's true, that's true.
You've spoken and called our people, so.
Thank you. I think we, we called you and people were there, the deputies were there. Corporal Hardy responded immediately on the telephone. So, thank you so much for your help. Appreciate it. Teamwork. Very good. Mr. Platt, public safety.
Well, um, the chief visited with me a bit today and I think everything is well under control and.
Good.
Corporal. And as you know, I've been a little bit out of the loop lately. I know that you've been able to meet with the corporal and, and others. Do you have anything to bring up state or?
I think basically, you're right. We, we've just been discussing the same thing you were discussing, which is looking at our arrangement, our agreement with the sheriff's department ongoing, seeing where we need to tweak it. I think the tweaks will be minor in nature. The main thing we want to do is that for the, for the city funds being spent on the sheriff's department, we get good coverage. And so, that if, if our citizens call within the police jurisdiction at 2:00 in the morning, sheriff's deputies there quickly. And I think, as you'll notice from the number of calls for the two-week period, over 500, they're pretty busy. They're staying busy and they're staying engaged.
Well, I do appreciate you taking up the slack for me and I want to tell the corporal how much I appreciate what I've seen already out of him. So, and if I may, I'd like to back up and make a comment about public work.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Franklin told me that he lost out on a couple of pieces of equipment because evidently there were some cities that were better prepared or standing at the gate when the gate opened, I don't know. But I, I would like for the council to consider, given the street department immediate access to some funds that they don't have to come to the council for when they have an opportunity like this. I think we've learned that we've got some very good trustworthy people and I would like, I don't know, there may already be a fund for that. Is there a Mr. Smith or something like that?
No, but you've inspired an idea, Will. We'll have to see if we can do something.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Because, you know, he lost out on a couple of pretty good opportunities and I'm sure we can trust him to do well with the investment.
We could ask counsel to look at that, to make sure we jump through all the hoops. I think what you're saying is, is you'd like Jason, in this case, the superintendent of Public Works to have the authority to, if he sees a, a golden opportunity to purchase a piece of cook on the bid list.
And be able to commit and we'll back him up.
Yeah.
If he messes up, we'll get a fire hose or something too.
Yeah. Sound good? Good, good point. And, and counsel will check on that. We'll make sure we do that the right way. All right, and we're still with you, Mr. Platt, on Parks and Rec. Anything to report?
Mr. Platt, could you talk a little bit about National Night Out since that falls under public safety?
Well, I was going to dump it all in your well.
Okay, thank you.
Every bit of it.
Every bit. Okay.
Could you give us a Parks and Recreation report, please?
Well, this kind of falls under public safety and Parks and Rec. National Night Out is August 1st. Okay, thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
Now you're official.
Now I'm official. National Night Out is, as it says, a national event that takes place on August 1st every year. They encourage communities to get together and get to know, have a evening of fun and information with your local law enforcement, firefighters, EMS. So, we have that planned on August 1st, which is the National Night Out. It's the date of our next council meeting. This will take place at the Fire Safety Training Complex from 5:00 until 9:00. And we're just inviting people to drop in and out. We have lots of fun things to give the kids. They want a fire chief hat, we've got them. We have law enforcement from the sheriff's office and firefighters that will be there to meet the children and the adults that are attending. We're going to feed people hot dogs and ice cream and we have bar slides. So, it's just going to be a fun community activity for the people of Sims. And want to encourage everybody to come and invite your friends and neighbors to come with you. One of the, the main purposes, I feel like, of this event is for young children to get to know on a personal level, a sheriff's officer or a fireman. And perhaps carry that with them and the good feelings and the fun time they had, carry that with them as they grow so that they become good citizens who respect and care about our first responders and officials in that capacity. So, anyway, that's going on August 1st, drop in, drop out, stay the whole time between 5:00 and 9:00. Have a good time. Have a good time. And we just want to encourage everybody to come out and join us. Build a sense of community.
Very good. Any other questions for Parks and Rec? Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Mr. Webb?
Where is this going to take place then?
At the Safety Training Center. What's the official name?
Public Safety Complex.
Public Safety Complex.
They're going to have a dump.
Public Safety Complex.
A dump the mayor booth.
Come out, yeah. It's free too.
I did not check into that.
And new council members?
And new council members.
I'd say new council members.
I'm not going to dump the mayor. My office is located really close to his.
And as far as rest of Parks and Recreation, we got quite a bit accomplished, but there are some things that are long-term, still consideration for the flag for Mr. Shirey. And let's see, there was one other thing that... Jason, what was it? We were talking about the park, or there wasn't?
Well, we're looking at playground equipment right now.
Playground equipment.
And also renting out space in that big field, letting organizations rent that out.
Yeah, we've had interest in organizations using that property, and we've got some requests of the city label to help us with that, and we have to report.
Can you clarify which property you're referring to?
Municipal park.
Okay. Good point, good point. All right, two, is that it for any other question? Mr. Lawson, you have any questions about Parks and Rec?
Nope.
All right. Just a quick reminder, this is really good news to everybody. Sales tax holiday this weekend, Friday through Sunday. Friday until midnight Sunday. During the weekend, four percent state sales tax and Sims City tax will be waived on certain items, including clothes priced at a hundred dollars or less per item, school supplies under fifty dollars per item, books under thirty dollars, and computers, tablets, laptops, and printers that cost less than seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, it's a good weekend to not pay taxes. And that's always unusual to hear from us up here on the table, so that's good. So, that's this weekend. Take advantage of that. Also, a reminder, Mr. Lawson, your first Mobile Municipal League Dinner is this Thursday night. We hope you will attend, you and your wife. And we are going to, if you attend, introduce you to the assembled group of elected officials as our newest city council member. So, we hope you can make it.
Who's it at?
It's at Pritchard City Hall, and we'll make sure you get there. You can arrive with one of us if you'd like. But I think we've all been there, Pritchard. It's a lot of fun, and we're proud to welcome you to the community, and let everyone at the municipal league see you and your wife. All right, if you will enjoy it. It's Thursday night, Thursday night. Very good.
We went...
Yeah. I think you've been the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They rotate every month.
That feels good over there.
Yeah. And ours will be in October, by the way, at Azaya City Church. So, we're getting closer to our turn. Much closer. Goodness, all right. Fortunately, I've talked to the church, and it appears we're good to go at the same place, at Azaya City for the Sims Municipal League Dinner. That's a good location. It's easy to find, especially now that Schillinger Road is getting better and better and better. Any other business that might come before the work session meeting? Very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. We're going to begin the regular session in about ten minutes. So, if you want to stretch your legs or whatever you need to do, we'll start back in about ten minutes with the regular session. All right, time is, what time you have?
Four oh nine.
Four oh nine. The time is four oh nine. The regular session of the city council, city assemblies, hereby called or ordered. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Watts is absent. Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Webb?
Here.
Councilmember Platt?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Very good. Invocation and pledge. Ms. Byrd, would you mind doing our invocation again? And pledge of allegiance? Corporal Hardy, would you lead us in that?
Father, we thank you that you're our God, that you're a king of kings and lord of lords. Father, we thank you for meeting with us today, that you have set governments in order. Thank you, Father, for giving us wisdom for all decisions that are made. We thank you for peace that passes all understanding. We thank you for your love for us in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you both. Very good. First item for the regular session is the consideration of the minutes for the regular council session. You have about a few minutes to review those. Shouldn't take too long.
I want to make a note that Mr. Smith brought up an amendment to number, or section nine resolutions. So, these are different than those that were emailed to everyone over the weekend. We've added the statement, after a brief discussion, it's up here on the screen, after a brief discussion about the remaining useful life and negligible residual value of the listed equipment, it was by common consent released back to Chief Brooks for gifting to neighboring volunteer fire departments.
Very good. So, the minutes will be as amended?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that the only amendment? Good. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move we approve the amendments as amended.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. The minutes from the regular council session of July 5th, 2017 are approved. Presentations and guest speakers, we have none, correct? Okay. Moving on to item seven, financial report, approval of checks for signature. I believe the council reviewed all checks during the work session. We'll go around the horn to see if there are any questions. Mr. Smith, do you have any questions about checks?
No questions.
Mr. Webb?
None.
Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawson?
No, sir.
Okay, very good.
I move we approve.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baker?
Yes. Very good. The checks are approved. All right. Our first ordinance will need to entertain a motion. This is the first time we've entertained this. We'd need to entertain a motion for immediate consideration for ordinance eight, and ordinance authorizing execution of a part-time facility rental agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Very good. As you look at ordinance eight, this is as we discussed during the work session. This is an agreement with Bishop State Community College to conduct community college classes at the Public Safety Complex Fire Training Facility, Monday through Thursday night from about 5:00 PM until about 10:00 PM. As you read the details of the contract, you will see, among other things, that one of our city employees, either a firefighter or Public Works, will be there from the time it starts until it's over, making sure that our facility is secure, and also to be there in case there are any technical issues that pop up, projectors, lights, whatever that may be. So, and I've already talked to Jason and Chief Brooks about this. Need to have someone who's fairly knowledgeable about how to fix something if it goes wrong. And usually, you know how that is with a class, it's a light bulb and a projector, or a light, or something along those lines. But our attorneys have reviewed the contract. There are no legal issues with it, as far as I know. Mr. Lind, anything going on? Very good. Any questions about ordinance eight? Mr. Smith?
Very excited about this opportunity. I move we approve.
Mr. Webb, any questions?
None.
Mr. Platt?
No questions.
Lawson?
No questions.
I second the motion.
Okay. There's a motion to approve, and a second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Very good, very good. We now have a legitimate contract with Bishop State, and college classes will be starting soon around the middle of August. Very good, very good. And along that line, I would encourage any of you who want to take additional college courses, now's your chance, and you don't have to go far to do it. There you go. Very good. Moving on to resolutions, we have three, nine, A, B, and C. We've discussed them in the work session. Is there a motion for immediate consideration for resolutions nine, A, B, and C?
So moved, second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Good. Resolution nine A is appointment of the city council member, a city council member to the Planning Commission for the 2016 to 2020 term. Discussion, Mr. Smith?
Mr. President, hardly anybody in our community knows the roadways and property and the people better than Councilman Lawrence Webb. I want to recommend, and I want to make the motion that we appoint him to the Planning Commission term ending in 2020.
Very good.
Second.
Any comment, Mr. Lawson, beyond that? Anything to add?
I think he'll do a good job himself.
Okay. Mr. Platt, any comment?
No, sir.
And I would concur with the positive comments. I've had the pleasure to work with Mr. Webb for quite a few years now, and I can't think of a finer individual to put on the Planning Commission than Mr. Webb. I'm thankful that he's willing to do it, and I appreciate all your help so far, Mr. Webb, on everything.
Thank you.
Really do appreciate it. Very good. Is there a motion to approve Resolution nine A, appointing Mr. Webb to the Planning Commission for the 2016 to 2020 term?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Very good. Nine A is approved. Moving on to nine B, authorizing expenditure funds to contract with Driven Engineering to provide consultation and reporting regarding adding certain private roads to the maintenance inventory. We talked about this during the work session. Essentially, as we discussed, Driven Engineering will be providing the engineering expertise to make sure that we proceed carefully and cautiously as we seek to incorporate some private roads into the city. So, that's basically it. Questions, comments, Mr. Smith?
I believe we've discussed this, and it's well-understood, and I believe it's a good thing for us to do right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Webb, comment?
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Platt?
Very smart. Let's, you know, let's do this.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
No questions.
No questions, very good. Is there a motion to approve nine B?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Moving on, item nine C, authorizing expenditure funds for the dedication and grand reopening of the city Sims Fire Station Number One. We discussed this earlier in the work session. Questions, Mr. Smith?
No questions, I'm for it.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
None.
Mr. Platt?
Well, I'd like to say a kind of strange remark, but it's almost a sad situation. I hope that we never forget the thousands of hours from hundreds of people that allowed us to get here, and let's just, let's just not forget it.
Very good point, very good point. And you're absolutely correct, absolutely correct, Mr. Platt. Sir, Mr. Lawson, any comment?
No comment.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve Resolution nine C?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.